Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is June 4th, 2019. The thought for today, the real measure of your wealth is how much you will be worth if you lose all your money. Bernard Melzah. I want to go ahead and officially call this board to order. Tonight, we have a special guest with us tonight from the Gateway Community Church, Pastor Dr. Porell. If, sir, if you would come tonight. We would like to welcome you here tonight. If you would, Pastor, tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your ministry, and if you would, pray for our community, please.
Okay, Chairman. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm pastor of Gateway Community Church. We've been there since 1990, and we're a diverse fellowship on Brown Bridge Road, right across from Fire Station 7, actually. I'm a graduate of Moody Bible Institute, of Trinity University, of Wheaton College, and of Christian Bible College with a PhD in theology. So, let me pray for us. Father, thank you for this opportunity to be in this place tonight. Thank you for these men and women who give their time and their talents to lead this community. Father, we pray for your blessing on them. We pray for your blessing on their families. Father, we pray that you would guide this meeting. We pray that you would give us wisdom in decisions that are made. We pray that you would give direction in discussion, and above all, Lord, give civility in disagreements. Father, we pray for the One Newton Campaign as well. Commit that to you, and we just commit this meeting to you now, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, we want to take an opportunity to thank you for the service that you provide in this community. Thank you for your leadership. Also, thank you for allowing our citizens of Newton County to come in your church and exercise their right to vote. So, we want to take an opportunity. We have a certificate here of appreciation, and so we just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for what you do. Also, tonight, for our pledge of allegiance tonight, we're going to ask our fire chief if he would come tonight and lead us in our pledge. We're so happy to have him back tonight. Can we get him?[184.51][184.51](APPLAUSE). Hey, man, he's been in the hospital, he's on hand surgery, and he's back, and he's ready to go.
Thank you, Chairman. If I would raise, stand, remove your hats, and put your heart over your, hand over your heart, and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Got one change. We want to remove item number 16. With that being done, I seek a motion for approval, please.
Please, our president.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes 5 to 0. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to come and make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to make any comments about the agenda? You may come at this time. Thank you. Next, in our chairman's report, I'll be quick because I know Mr. Kerr got some exciting things that he want to do tonight. First thing I want to do, ACCG has recognized one of our commissioners, Commissioner Stan Edwards, and we want to take an opportunity to thank him for his leadership. I just want to read just a little bit right quick. It says, this is from the Board of Commissioners to Mr. Edwards. "Thank you for all you do for Newton County. The efforts to bring internet to all of Newton County, and your tireless work for your district and the entire county is appreciated by all who make up Newton County, One Newton." Also, this is from the chairman. "I want to thank and congratulate Commissioner Stan Edwards on his drive and tenacity to bring broadband to Newton County. Due to his efforts, thousands of our citizens will be able to access internet service for the southern part of Newton County." So, we want to thank you for what you do for our community, Commissioner Edwards. You put a lot of smiles on a lot of people's faces. So, it guides. If y'all would, give him a round of applause, please.[363.13][363.13](APPLAUSE). Also, last but definitely not least, let me say this. Not least, well deserved. Well deserved. Commissioner Schultz has, from the beginning, she has led the drive for the Newton County Boys and Girls Club, and they are finally have opened up, and I want to turn this over to her and let her make some comments tonight because she has put a lot of work in this. So, Commissioner Schultz, if you would.[406.81][406.81](APPLAUSE).
So, yesterday was the opening of the new Boys and Girls Club for Newton County, and it's on Brown Bridge Road, just west of the silos of Ellington. And this was our award for the Board of Commissioners because of the citizens who voted to put 400, almost $490,000 on the splot to help with the Boys and Girls Club. So, this is not just for the Newton County Board of Commissioners. This is for the citizens of Newton County. And what I'd like to say is that the Boys and Girls Club was a vision by Andre Cooper about 12 years ago, and Andre worked tirelessly. And for those of us, there have been many people that were involved over those 12 years. And finally, we came together yesterday and opened the building, and yesterday, there were 25 Newton County teens that were being served, and we understand that for this summer, there will be 30 teens that will be served. And so, we want to encourage all, not only the teens in the western side of the county, but teens throughout the county who want a place to go for the Boys and Girls Club. You're welcome at this location. So, this is something that we are excited about, and we hope the community is excited about. Thank you.[508.62][508.62](APPLAUSE).
Guys, also, I posted this on Facebook last night, and I got so many, I didn't put the address on there, and I got so many people asking what the address is. So, if anybody want the address, the address is 13634 Brown Bridge Road. I think that's a district, too. 13634 Brown Bridge Road. Thank you. I think that's all I have. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I wanted to give the board an update on our strategic plan that we've been working on. The official start, if you will, is actually with the beginning of the new fiscal year, FY '20. However, since the adoption of the plan, we're moving now into the implementation phase. And so, what we are doing is preparing all of the documents and so forth for the reporting so that we can get our message out. So, Brian, if you'll go to, what I want to do at this point is talk for just a minute about our, this is actually our website, the Strategic Plan website, and the way to get there for the benefit of the public is to go to the homepage, click on Governments, and then if you'll click on Newton County Strategic Plan. It's also, I believe, under the Transparency section as well. So, you can find it in either place. On the webpage, you're going to see, this is a little bit of the things that you'll see about the misinformation about the plan, also the plan itself so that you can go through and read it, the public can read it. But also, on here is going to be our reporting documents that the department head, well, I'm sorry, you'll also, you can see there, there's a, some pictures there of some of the things that we've been doing. That's Tutor Mate. That was one of the projects that we took on where we're assisting the schools. We had county volunteers who are signed up to read with a student for 30 minutes a week. Initially, they asked for 10 volunteers, and when we put the word out, we actually had almost 60 employees who volunteered to do that. So, that's one of the things that we're doing, working on to build trust and also for a quality of life issue. But we'll have some pictures there. You'll see on the bottom, there's some buttons there for open records and tag office, so forth, agendas and minutes. But we'll also have some buttons down there for the reports. We're still working a little bit on this particular site, but what you'll be able to see is a recap in a spreadsheet format of the plan and the strategies that have been developed. And you'll see those are listed, Strategy A, the various strategies. There's a spreadsheet there, Strategy A for Year 1, Strategy B, Year 1, and so on and so forth, all the way through the third year. And what the public will also be able to see is the, to the right there, you'll see those three columns. Brian, if you'll pull those down a little bit so we can look at the heading. Now, the other direction, please. If you can get back to the top. Yeah. You'll see what the priority is. We have established what difficulty level it is, and then the status. And those will be, as those tasks are completed, the department heads will go to their champion. Each of these strategies has a champion assigned to it. The champion and the department head will work together to make sure that it's complete. It'll be submitted to me for review. Once I've reviewed it, and then we can say, made the determination, yes, this task is complete. Then we move on. Actually, we'll move on to the next. You see, there's some information that says integrated. What that means is that we have integrated that particular task into our culture, if you will, here at the county. For instance, that number, if you look online, 14 there, you'll see it says, I believe, it says attend open forum meetings when requested. That has already been integrated for that particular department, and they have, they are getting all of, they're making themselves available so that it becomes part of our regular daily routine, if you will. And so, that will be the, and those will be done again for all of the strategies throughout the three-year period that we have for this particular plan. Now, understanding this is a dynamic document, and so there may be changes based accordingly on what we get feedback from in the way of what the needs are. The other part of this, we'll have what are called key success measures, and those measures will be used to determine whether or not we're meeting our goals, and thus, whether or not the needs of the stakeholders are being met, the needs of the employees are being met, and so forth. And so, we will keep an eye on that, and if we are not staying on track, then what we would do is adjust the plan and adjust what our action steps are in order to make sure that we do meet those. So, if you could go to the next, to the blank, that blank form, if you would, Brian. This is one of the reporting forms that we're going to be using, and it just, it's got a lot of information on it there. But what we intend to do then, once this is completed, is to copy these and actually place them in a physical, hard copy book. We'll have them electronically, too, but we will have that available so that people can take a look at them and see, you know, what's if they want particular information about a particular task. So, that will be available. Also, as you'll notice, that the report for the manager's report for this meeting, we have changed this report a little bit in that I'll be receiving these monthly, or these updates, instead of weekly now, monthly from the department heads. And you'll also see, as you noticed through there, we're still working on training some of the department heads, but you'll see that there's a reference in parentheses in most places in there to a strategy and an action step, and whether it's Strategy A, or the operational action step, and so on. You'll see that as you look through there, and this will give you an idea of what has happened in the departments during the past month, plus a, in the second column there, you'll see upcoming, what are intended to be upcoming things, things in the upcoming month, and then also what strategy that those activities will be supporting. So, that will take, and I'm not going to go through that. I did have his, James Brown, is he here tonight? I was hoping that he would be. One of the things I do want to bring to your attention is that Newton County won the best tasting drinking water for the state of Georgia. I think you all may be aware of that. But now, we're going to be competing nationally for the same title, so we want to wish all of those folks good luck.
That's awesome.
Sir?
That's awesome.
Yeah. It's a great, great, great achievement for all of those folks. And now, what I would like to do is ask Chief Connor if you would come up. We have some of our firefighters who are here tonight to receive some special awards who were recognized on the CARES program, and then we also have some promotions that you all, in your support of the fire department, have made available for positions that, some lieutenant positions and some engineer positions that we'll be promoting those people to tonight. So, Chief, if you would kind of tell the board a little bit about your, the CARES program and what that is, and then we'll get your, the firefighters up here.
All right. First off, I just want to say it's my honor and privilege tonight to recognize members from our department for their accomplishments and dedication to our citizens that we serve, the department and the county, which we serve daily. I'm proud to be able to recognize our personnel for state awards they received through the CARES program last month, and others for completing promotional testing, advancing their careers with the department and the county, and moving up in their career ladder in the profession they have chosen to serve in. First, we're going to be recognizing five personnel that received state awards through the CARES program. First, I'd like to explain a little bit about the CARES program. The CARES program stands for Cardiac Arrest Registry to Enhance Survival. Georgia is one of only 23 states which participate in the registry. And what the registry does, it tracks the patients who have critical cardiac issues or sudden cardiac problems, from the onset of their symptoms to their return home. These patients receive the intermediate care of 911 operators, which is where they actually access the system once they realize they're having a problem, from pre-hospital care to in-hospital care to cardiac rehab and actually return home with a positive outcome. Each year, there's approximately 350,000 persons in the United States that experience an out-of-hospital cardiac incident. Approximately 90% of these patients who experience out-of-hospital cardiac arrest do not survive the incident. Survival is poor, and only 10.4% of people who suffer out-of-hospital incidents are being discharged home from the hospital. And that's what we're here to recognize. Five of our employees tonight because they made a difference, and 10% of our citizens that had a pre-hospital incident on a cardiac issue, and they're here today due to their efforts. I received a letter from Piedmont EMS Director Carly Codat that stated, and this is what the letter said that she sent to me. "By the efforts put forth by these men and women of the Newton County Fire Department, three citizens who sustained cardiac arrest survived and were able to rejoin their families and loved ones with little to no neurological deficits." So, at this time, I would like to call our five employees that received this award, and unfortunately, I think we only have three of the five that were able to attend tonight. But first, I'd like to call up firefighter Andrew Miller for his participation and efforts.[1242.15][1242.15](APPLAUSE). Andrew was part of the overall team approach that assisted in the care of one of our citizens. His actions on this day has actually merited his achievement of this state award and the CARES program.
Also, the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Andrew, and we'll be presenting you with a Save a Life certificate for going, and this will be for the other firefighters as well, for going above and beyond to successfully assist in the cardiac resuscitation of a patient who made a full recovery. We applaud your swift action and acknowledge your dedication and commitment to public service. We salute you for saving a life on this day, the 19th day of April, 2018. So, thank you, Andrew.[1305.83][1305.83](APPLAUSE).
All right, next, the two next members were unable to attend tonight, but I'd also like to just read their names, but it would be Engineer Chris Barnes and firefighter Ally Brodrick for their participation on the efforts on a call on October 18th. And I'm going to ask if Chief Massey would not come and receive these awards since he is a suppression chief.[1350.13][1350.13](APPLAUSE). Next, I would like to recognize Lieutenant Paul Crumless and firefighter Quentin Dalton for their participation and efforts on a call back on December 27th, 2018, as a part of an overall team approach to provide care for another citizen of our county that has awarded them this great honor as a CARES recipient.[1392.13][1392.13](APPLAUSE). At this time, I'd just like to personally thank you guys for all you do for our department, our citizens, and looking forward to many, many, many more years of y'all's dedication and service to the citizens and the county. Chairman, Board, the last thing I'd like to do is, we've got, our department is growing, and we've actually just recently finished up some promotional exams and testing, and I would also like to recognize these members of the department, which have worked to achieve recent promotions within the department. We have three members who have achieved the rank of engineer, and at this time, I'd like to call them up and their family members that's going to do the badge pinning, but Next, we'd like to recognize Engineer Sam Shepard.[1572.53][1572.53](APPLAUSE). Next, we'd like to recognize Engineer Ben McCannon.[1639.03][1639.03](APPLAUSE). We also recently promoted two engineers to the rank of lieutenant, so we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Justin McCord at this time.[1691.03][1691.03](APPLAUSE). And next, we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Martin Stanley.[1735.76][1735.76](APPLAUSE). This time, I'd just like to say thank you guys for all you do for the department, the county, and our citizens, and moving yourselves forward. I think we've got some great growth in our department and you guys as we are moving the department forward. Last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to give a special thanks to you. Last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to give a special thanks to you, this board, for the support you've shown to the fire services as we work to build our department to support and meet the needs of our citizens, the businesses, and visitors, and the county that we work to strive to serve on a daily basis. I want to say thank you to y'all because without y'all's support, these gentlemen would not be up here today as we move the department forward. So, thank you for all your support.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank our fire department for all that they do, fire services, and they're leaving out, but guys, we really appreciate what you do. Next on the agenda is item number eight, old business renewal proposal for the Newton County Board of Commissioners with Cigna. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, we had presented this for the Cigna insurance for renewal. You had asked us to look into a couple of other options, which we did. We've met specifically with Commissioner Mason and answered any questions that were there. And so, we're ready to move ahead. We'd like to request that you approve this renewal of the Cigna policy for this next year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Cigna that was tabled from May 21st, 2009.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. A question I have, I think it was supposed to have been a get with Humana and who else was it? United. You know, I guess I'm talking to Mike. What was the, what was the reply?
What we, Humana refused or did not want to place a bid with us. United, we did contact, we did contact United. They declined based on the timeline and the information that they had, but we also talked, or rather, our broker talked with United, and they had indicated to him that if they did try to quote, it would be considerably more than what we had agreed to pay with Cigna.
Any more discussion? I seek, I'm sorry, all in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve.
Move for a quorum of the consent agenda?
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is finances. Ms. Cross, please.
You all have your booklets, so I apologize, but Barnes will work on getting the slideshow for the audience. But tonight, I'm presenting the April 2019 financials. On page one of your packet, we have general fund revenue. So, we're about 10 months into the fiscal year, so we should be about 83%. We are currently at 95.4% on our revenue. Most notably, our tax collections, we're at 90% of current year tax collections, which is very good. And the other notable increase would be in splosts, lost, our local option sales tax. Those are actually trending about 11% higher than last year. So, we're looking about, currently about $900,000 more than we budgeted in our local option sales tax revenue. Middle of the page is just a chart of our collections monthly in revenue, and as you will see, it depicts our large property tax collection months of October, November, and January. May and June will look very small, similar to the past couple of months. We're pretty much fully collected in the area of property taxes. As I said, our general fund budget to actual revenue is at 95.4%. On page six of your packet, we have our general fund expenditures. As I said, about 10 months in, we should be about 83%, and we're currently at 72.9%. Most of our savings falls into the other cost category where our contingency for the new positions is, and we still have about 1.6 million in that category. For our monthly expenditures, we average about 4.5 to 5 million expenditures per month. November and May, we have three payrolls, so you will see those trend a little higher. The next, at the bottom of your page, our general fund budget to actual, as I said, we are at 73% of our budget currently. On page 12, you have your general fund expenditures by departments. We don't have any departments that are currently over budget. The only one, the top, you'll see the non-departmental, that is at 18%. That is where our contingency for the new positions is housed. So, that's why it looks like it's very under budget. And then, government buildings and facilities at 128%. That, again, I'll remind you, is due to the ABM credit of $432,000, which we are waiting to receive that report. I still anticipate it to be sometime in June, but I have not received an update. Page 13, you have a summary of your, of our general fund. Our actual, we are currently at 62.1 million for revenue and 47.8 in expenditures, so we're currently at 14.2 revenues over expenditures. As I pointed out, the last couple of months of the year, our revenues won't change a whole lot, but our expenditures obviously will. As I said, we average about 4.5 to 5 million a month in that, in that area. Page 14 is the general fund, fund balance discussion. Our current policy is 15 to 22% of general fund operating expenditures, so we're about 1.8 million short of that, so very close. We're recommending about five months, so we have a ways to go on that one. That's about 14.4 million. But it's a good goal to have. I think in the next two to five years, probably more like five, we can become very close to that goal. Page 15 is an analysis of the enterprise funds. Our water fund is currently at 83% of revenue and 59% on expenses. The solid waste fund is at 88% of revenue and about 73% on expenses. And the Gaithers Fund is at 66% of revenue and about 55% on expenses. Page 33 is the 2005 splosts. Once again, we are simply, at the bottom, you'll note, we're making the debt payments on the administration building. The 2011 splosts, all of the projects are winding down. The only two projects left to begin are the historic jail and the fire station. The 2017 splosts, only a few expenditures in this area. We are beginning all of the bonded projects, and those will happen over the next couple of years. If you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see an analysis of the collections. So, we are currently about 2.7 million over our projection of 900,000. And once again, those are trending just like our loss because those are obviously based off the same type calculations, but 11% higher than prior years. So, we are seeing an increase in the sales tax collections. Page 36 is your impact fee fund. We have 845,000 of impacts fees collected through April. And page 37 is the debt service summary. I just want to point out midway down, you have the fire fund. We have paid off that master lease. The 2012 cops, the jail pods, that was paid in full in December. And the 2010 water revenue bonds were paid off early in September of 2018 from the sale of the Jones County mitigation land. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I just want to go back to the 2017 splosts where we're trending about 2 million over in collections. In the 2011 splosts, we trended over as well, and we used some of that money to augment the money at the Judicial Center. At what point will we explore using that overage of funds?
You know, my recommendation would be, once we start these go-bond projects, that's going to be over the next two to three years, that's when we'll get a better idea of how the projects are going. Did we budget enough for those projects? Because all of the projects in the splosts have to be completed, so we'll want to make sure that we adequately funded those. I would say at least 75% through the splosts before you really could, I would suggest, get a good idea of what you want to use those excess collections for, to make sure at least the larger projects have been completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. I guess you're going to be here for number 10 as well, this budget amendment?
Yes. So, the first budget amendment, I believe, is to move money out of our reserve for fiscal year changes to fund the legal settlement payment for the Avery settlement, and that was 175,000. So, that is that budget amendment. That will leave our reserve contingency with a balance of 101,649 dollars.
And Commissioner Edwards?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to accuse myself of misvoting this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Cowan?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the legal settlement of 175,000 dollars from the contingency fund.
Can you amend the motion to do all of it at one time, please?
All of what at one time?
It would have the monies for the Avery settlement and also the 60,000 dollars for Public Works and 20,000 dollars on the capital improvements.
Okay. Did you?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we had to do each. Okay. So, the second one is the 60,000 dollars to move from, or 55,000 from BOC and 20,000 from Public Works. We're going to move that into the capital improvements fund since the study will span more than one year. So, it's a total of 70,000, 75,000 we will move.
All right. I'd like to amend my motion to include, in addition to the 175,000 dollars for the legal settlement, to also include the 55,000 from the BOC, Public Works Departments, to capital improvements to fund transit study for years 2019 and 2020, both years.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four. One is standing. Thank you. Thank you. Next is number 12. Ms. Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. There were some questions at one of our recent Board of Commissioners meetings regarding pay grades being separate for constitutional officers, and I was tasked with going back to do some research to bring forward for you tonight. As I've said many times before, and I will say it again tonight, the BOC is not authorized to set salaries of a constitutional officer's employees or to instruct them on how to spend their budgeted funds. In my case law research, I did find a Boswell case, 274 Georgia 50, where they discussed this exact same item, and it indicates the BOC is not authorized to set salaries of constitutional officers. Those duties are within the discretion of constitutional officers. The BOC, however, sets the budget. Thereafter, the responsibility falls on the constitutional officer to make personnel and budget decisions on their own. And I will be happy to answer any questions. We'll put a caveat out that if you go pull the case, it does say if it's a civil service system, it's different. You all do not operate under a civil service system, so that's not of a concern.
Commissioner Schultz?
So, then, do we need a motion to approve these if we're not, if we're not authorized to set these pay grades?
No, actually, the sheriff's contracting a power in his ability. He doesn't have to bring this to the board.
So, this is more for informational purposes?
He does not have to.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next is item number 13, Recreation Commission Purchase. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Chairman. What you have before you is an agreement, a contract with the, to repair the roof at the Turner Lake complex. The cost of that is 94,000 dollars, and the source was, would be the 2011 splosts. This project was bid appropriately according to all of our purchasing policies, and so the best bid was selected at 94,000.
Mr. Kerr, did we rebid this?
Yes, sir, we did. We actually did have to rebid this. We accepted the bids, and there was a complication, and so we decided to rebid the...
Okay. All right. I seek a motion, please. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass five to zero. Thank you. Next is item number 14, Public Works Request the Board to Grant a Sewer Easement. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request by the adjacent property owners to the property that's where our jail is located, to grant an easement across our property so that the city of Covington can serve that adjacent property with sewer. The sewer would be owned and, of course, maintained by the city of Covington and not the county. The, I believe the sheriff has indicated that he is in agreement with doing this, and so we did request that that dis-easement be granted.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 15, approval, approval to execute a quick claim deed. Ms. Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. Back in 2006, the county properly abandoned all or part of Hamilton Road in accordance with OCGA 3274. The county did quick claim portions to several surrounding owners, however, due to probably an oversight here. Misty and Jason Savage did not receive the quick claim of their portion of the right-of-way. We have reviewed the minutes, and we have determined that Misty and Jason Savage are the rightful owners to the abandoned right-of-way and appear to just simply not have been included on the 2006 resolution to abandon a portion of Hamilton Road. Therefore, we had asked the board to approve tonight that we...
Therefore, we had asked the board to approve tonight that we do move forward with quick claiming the portion of the right-of-way to Misty and Jason Savage.
Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Wake up, guys. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion?
I'm just curious if it can, Commissioner Edwards, respect the...
Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Just a quick question. This is not going to have any adverse impact on anybody's ability to get to their property or nothing like that, is it?
No, sir. And, in fact, if you look at the map for it, it's a perfectly cut out little rectangular piece, so we don't have those issues.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number seventeen, Human Resources approval of fiscal year twenty holiday calendar. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the same calendar that we are currently using. You will see that there are the regularly scheduled holidays. There is a personal floating holiday included in that. That holiday is to be determined by the individual employees and has to be taken during the fiscal year, cannot be cashed out, and if that holiday is not taken, it cannot, that leave cannot be accrued. So, we would just simply ask that you approve this calendar.
Okay. Any, Commissioner Schultz?
I was going to move for approval of the calendar.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I get, thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is number eighteen, Discussion of Approval Request for Service Delivery Strategy. Ms. Martin, please.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. As you all know, we've been working over a year now on our service delivery strategy. And, I'm happy to say that in the last week, week and a half, we're starting to get red lines back steadily from the cities. I'd like to specifically thank New Bern for their quick turnaround of some red lines recently, and also Mr. Turner has been working diligently on behalf of the city of Covington. At this point in time, our communications with the city, we've indicated that we'd like to get an extension through October to finish up a couple of the IGAs, two of those being our IGA relating to the square and the other being our consecutive water agreement. The consecutive water supply agreement is very complex, as one might imagine, when you're dealing with water supply for a county this size. So, therefore, the rate structures and different items are certainly something that the cities want to try and negotiate with us on. We have asked, again, that they agree to an extension. At this point in time, New Bern met last night. They were not in favor of an extension at this time. However, their attorney did inform their counsel regarding some of the penalties that can occur if we do not get a proper extension or get our service delivery strategy approved. And, that does include the stopping of state funds that come to the county, which is a significant amount of money that the county would have to be on the hook for if we do not get a proper extension for the service delivery strategy. Both Erin Meyer and myself will continue to work very closely with the cities to see if we can get some agreement to move forward. But, tonight, I'd ask the Board of Commissioners, based upon our efforts most recently, that the board approve allowing the county attorney to seek an extension until October 2019 for the service delivery strategy.
Thank you. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Good morning, the motion has been voted by the county attorney.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. In estimation, how much grant funding might we lose if we don't agree to extend?
I'm sorry, I can't give you an absolute figure on that, but we are now in the season for grant renewals and for applications. It could impact our ability to obtain CSBG, CDBG funding as well as certain types of state funding, state grants. It could impact our transportation, some of the transportation money that we have. One of the most significant things would be our ability to borrow money from GFA, the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. However, we're not anticipating having to apply for any loans at this time, but that would significantly impact that. But, so my understanding is, is that if we have any grant, whatever grants we might have currently that are being, where we are getting reimbursements from the state for expenses, that may be, those reimbursements may be curtailed until we get back into compliance. And, it would, it may prohibit us from being able to obtain any grants during the application, the application process. But, it does not affect all of the grants that we have, which is good news.
So, I guess, in other words, we stand to lose millions?
Yes, sir. We need to, we need to have this completed. We need the cooperation of the cities in order to do that as well.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan?
Megan, if I'm wrong, tell me. But, we, this basically puts our qualified local government status in jeopardy, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We will lose it on June 30th if this is not taken care of. There's, I've spoken with folks at DCA, and while there had been some thought that maybe DCA would fast-track our request, I have been told that that is not a possibility. So, they need our plan 30 days before the expiration date of our service delivery strategy application.
And, it also jeopardizes the city's qualified local government status.
Yes, sir.
Everybody gets kicked out.
Yes, sir.
So, it's in our best interest to work this thing out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think our county attorney just answered my question. So, we need to have this done by June 30th. Is what you're suggesting?
Yes, sir. We need an extension and we, an extension for the cities to vote upon it and spread it upon their minutes. Because even at this juncture, when we're at June 4th, the DCA would still deliberate on any certain application beyond June 30th. So, we're in a window where an action needs to be taken so that we don't lose that qualified local government status and neither do our cities that are within the county.
So, if we approve an extension, that means that we won't lose our grant status?
No, the cities are going to, we're going to have to have a few of the cities also vote and spread upon their minutes that we need an extension. So, I would impress upon each of you to reach out to your city colleagues that, to see what we can do to work together in a more cooperative and collaborative spirit.
So, I just want to get clarity to make sure that I'm getting this right. So, it is in our best interest to get an extension, or it's not in our best interest to get an extension that they get it done by June 30th?
Chairman Baines wanted me to emphasize something, then I'll jump back on your question, that we cannot get the extension by ourselves. That is correct. We have to have the city involvement there. But, it is absolutely my recommendation that we get that extension. Because the water, especially the consecutive water system agreement, it's very technical. You can't expect, you know, for a city or a county to review it in that compressed timeframe. So, yes, sir, it's my recommendation that you approve the extension and that the cities do the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lloyd, no matter how we, what we decide tonight, is there any way we can get an executive summary that demonstrates what we're at odds over in terms of SDS? Please. In email?
Sure. And, as a matter of fact, the county attorney, Ms. Martin, already has put that together, and we have been keeping a tally of what has been at issue. Those are the two, the major, the major issue is consecutive water agreement, individual, one of the other things is the 911 center. The other, as I understand it, there was a new issue came up last night in New Bern with the elections. So, but, but yes, to answer your question, I'm sorry, yes, we can get that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Henderson?
I just have one quick suggestion. Is there any way we could just all sit down together at a work session and maybe we just hash these issues out?
I tried to.
Okay. Well, the reason why I said that, because of my contacts with the mayor, and therefore, one of the things that he had relayed to me was that we, we obviously, our lawyers and county managers, they feel like it was kind of somewhat, to a certain degree, our responsibility of sitting down as elected official and hashing it out, along with our lawyers and county manager. And, so, just throwing it out there.
Thank you. Mr. Kerr, you want to remind the board what we decided on in the work session, in our work session that we had with the, with the mayor?
Yes. Couple of the issues that, in regards to the, particularly in regards to the consecutive water agreement, part of the proposal from the cities was that they have a committee that would be established with representatives from each of the cities and a representative from the board, and that we would provide for them a five-year capital improvements plan. But, if we decided that we needed to do a project outside of that capital improvements plan, then they would have a vote whether or not we were, could move forward with that plan. And, that unequivocally was voted no on by the board, that that was not going to be, that they, that they would not be, we would not have that type of arrangement. We certainly have no objection to an advisory group or if they want to make recommendations to the board, but as far as having a part in the decision-making process on what the projects that the county would undertake in terms of improvements to the water system, that's, we believe that that is not an appropriate position or not an appropriate authority that the cities should have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Next is, oh, I'm sorry, we need to get a motion. We got a motion already. Yeah, we got a motion. All in favor? We had a motion from three and five for the extension, the extension. All in favor? All right. Five, thank you. It passed five to zero. Next is the final reading for the Amber Sierra Enterprises Doing Business as Texaco Food Mark, 2156 Highway 81, Oxford, Georgia, 30054. That's District Five. Final reading.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final reading for Amber Serena Enterprises Doing Business as Texaco Food Mark, 2156 Highway 81, Oxford, Georgia, 30054.
It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is item number 20, Citizens Comments. This is an opportunity we allow citizens to come up and make comments. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please. You may come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. I want to remind everybody that we want to make sure we are respectful to everyone here tonight, and you make sure you're respectful to the commissioners, and the commissioners will make sure they're respectful to you. So, if you would, please come at this time, state your name and address for the record,
Hi, my name is Gene Wills. Live at 125 Homestead Way, Covington, Georgia. One thing I had was a kind of idea I had that I want to pass on. I just had it, so I'm passing it on now. I saw prisoners today picking up trash along the side of highways and different roadways in Newton County, and I was thinking, maybe we should start a program for the kids that get the free lunch at school on poverty level, maybe give them the opportunity to work and they can pick up trash. I think, one, if these kids are out there working and they're picking up trash, they're earning a pay. It teaches them about the pollution, because a lot of people throw trash out. They don't get there by itself. So, I thought it may be a good idea to have a summer program, those kids that are on the poverty line who get free lunch, free meals at school, get opportunity to do that. Secondly, I put in a record request. Now, record request was sent back to me saying that it was too broad. I thought I'd shorten it, but I haven't heard anything back. I understand it's three days to get an answer, so I was concerned about that. And, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, Miss Board Secretary, Board Attorney. My name's Gladstone Nicholson. Not to forget Lloyd, county manager. I live at 495 Lakeside Circle. I'm just here tonight to hear, obviously, but what's drawn my attention as I was reading your agenda over the weekend is the matter of the last item on the, regarding the discussion about the cities and the extension. You know, we talk about one Newton. We talk about a growing community that works together, but, and I hate to throw gasoline where it need not be thrown, so forgive me if it seems that way. When you have a county where you have incorporated areas that have a small population relative to the population of the unincorporated county or incorporated areas, it seems to me that there is a problem with our governance. We're not here to resolve that tonight, but as we look forward in the years to come, maybe perhaps in the next census and its redistricting, we'll look at some things because I don't see, as far as good governance, I'm not trying to minimize anyone because we're all citizens, one man, one vote still rules, obviously. The idea here is the way your government is set up that less than a third of your population could hamstring such a vital project that we're looking to address. I'm just thinking something has to be done, as I said, looking forward in the next redistricting. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just kind of want to reiterate from our financial perspective, glad to see that we're moving in the right direction when it comes to our budget. I want to thank our financial director and our county manager for doing an amazing job, really spelling it out and really being very detail-oriented when it comes to where we are and where we're headed and where we're going. And, so I think we've done an amazing job in solidifying our budget, and so definitely excited about that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you again to the citizens for voting for the SPOST item that, for the West Side Youth Facility. I want to thank this board for all the support that we have given and for the citizens who continue to support our youth in this, in this community. I think we've got... I think we've got, we are showing that we really believe in the future of our youth, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's somewhat to me saddens me that, you know, I've never have, in all the years that I've sat here on this board, have ever known the mayors not to kind of somewhat work with us, or we work with them, and it saddens me because of the fact that, you know, we're all in this together, you know, and there should be a common ground that we could work together. We shouldn't have to even be thinking about losing millions of dollars in grant funding and just because it seem like we won't cooperate or we won't work together. I think, I believe, and I don't think, I believe that the citizens want us to work together, all of us, and for a common goal, and the common goal is to make Newton County, we know is the best county in the, in the whole wide world, but it seems like we just, we're not, right now, we're just not on the same page. But I go back to one thing, and I close with this, is the thing that I talked about when I was re-elected, I think a year ago, it's called love. If we love one another, if we love our community the way that we say we do, the way that we knock on those doors and ask you to vote for us, then there shouldn't, there shouldn't be no obstacle that we can't overcome.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan? Thank you. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Kerr, anything?
No, I, thank you, I would like to echo what Commissioner Mason has said and give the kudos where they belong, which is to our finance director who's done a phenomenal job and continues to work extremely hard to bring you the information that you need and to help us find ways to put us, ourselves in a lot better financial position than we were just a few short years ago, so.
Thank you, sir. Just, I want to make sure everybody is aware that we have had several meetings with the different cities, not one, not two, several, I know more than three. So, we're still working on it, we're still trying to get it done. So, guys, you know, it takes, to make a, to make a team, it takes everybody to be a part of that team. Somebody got to play offense, somebody got to play defense. At the end of the day, we got to be a team, so you just can't be half, you got to be everybody. And also, Ms. Cross, thank you, and Mr. Kerr, for all your hard work that you put in on this budget. Like, we're going in the right direction, so, guys, we thank you. Anything else tonight? I seek a motion that we adjourn. Man, that's a, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's the fans, y'all have moved all night long. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.